Vice Mayor Alziger here. Mayor Perschbacher, here. We have a quorum.
As we have a quorum, we will continue with this meeting. First thing on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. Our proclamation today is recognizing Public Works Week, which is May 19th to the 25th. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and well-being of the people of the city of Mount Pleasant. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other facilities essential for these services. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens and civic leaders of Michigan to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and related programs in their respective communities. And whereas 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now, resolved I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby designate the week of May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to recognize the substantial contributions made by our public work staff to protect our health, safety, and advancing quality of our life, of life for all. In witness whereof, whereof I have hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 13th day of May, 2024. Thank you. At this time, I will ask the commission if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion it carries. At this time, it is time for public input on agenda items. This is where you can come forward to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. I'll ask for your name and address. And you may, you may present on something on the agenda. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be given five minutes once you state your name and address. Is there anyone on Zoom today?
No hands up.
No hands up. Are there any emails?
No.
Okay, anyone in the audience, if they'd like to come forward, they can step up to the podium.
Thank you. My name is Norman Emily. I live at 624 West Preston Road here in Mount Pleasant. And so I live about two houses on the north side of Watson, Preston, right off Watson there. I'm here to talk to you about grass, the green grass, okay? I understand there's an ordinance here that they're going to discuss about the chances of maybe changing it to where wildflowers or flowers in general could do the yards instead of the grass. I have to say, I'm kind of concerned about that. Thirty-five years ago, I was transferred to the state of Michigan, had the opportunity to live any town that I wanted to, any section of the state. I drove the area very, very well. End up, I picked Mount Pleasant for a couple of reasons. Number one, I was probably the most prominent reason was location, central of the state, good highways going north, south, east, and west. But as far as the family was concerned, we picked Mount Pleasant because it was a clean, seemed like the type of town that we wanted to live in. We raised two of our kids here for, and like I say, it's been 35 years. One of the biggest things that attracted us to Mount Pleasant is all the homes were kept up very nice, large, nice green yards. Kind of what you think of, I guess when I think about green, green yards, I think of baseball fields, which are beautiful. The White House has green yards that are pristine. I like wildflowers. We have a lot of flowers in our yard. But I don't think it's the right move to do away with the green. First of all, flyers don't live very long. The short, it's a very short time span between the, the beautiful areas. Maybe it's a, some of them are two weeks. Tulips, my tulips are already gone, okay? So now you got to, there's this stub with no, nothing on them, okay? Grass is great, whether it's spring, summer, or fall. It's a nice finished product. I think it would be a mistake to change what seems to be working. It brought us here. Who knows how many other people it brought here? But I would just like to encourage you to maybe not change something that's been around as long as apple pie and, what do they say? The baseball and apple pie and the flag. I mean, you've had green yards here forever. Let's just keep it the way it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Or speak on anything that is on the agenda? Not seeing any, I'm going to close the public input. At this time, we'll move on to receipt of petitions and communications. Manager dissent.
Received petitions and communications this evening includes monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the airport joint operations and management board from February, minutes of the zoning board of appeals from August, and minutes of the planning commission from April.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to consent items. Is there anything in the consent items that the commission would like taken off and placed in the regular agenda? Okay, manager dissent.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held April 22nd, 2024. Consider a contract with Peerless Midwest for the high-service pump number two rehabilitation project for a cost not to exceed $26,000. Consider resolution authorizing amendment to the standard lighting contract with Consumers Energy for the removal of eight streetlights on Broomfield Road and Washington Street. Consider resolution authorizing the submission of a 2024 Michigan Department of Transportation Shared Streets and Spaces grant application for the Mid-Michigan GKB Trail Project. Receive managed natural landscaping ordinance and set a public hearing for May 28, 2024 on the same, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. All those in favor of accepting the consent audio, items as presented? Or can I have a motion for accepting the items as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to a, our first and only public hearing. This public hearing is on the development district for a license. Manager dissent.
Narrativity Artisan Coffee Roasters, who is doing business as Pounder Coffee, seeking a development district license in order to sell alcohol at their downtown establishment. Downtown Development Director Michelle Sponseller is here to provide the city commission with information related to the request ahead of the public hearing. As the applicant meets all of the requirements for the license, the city commission is asked to approve the provided resolution. Direct staff to complete the necessary steps in the approval process. I'll hand it off to Director Sponseller.
Good evening. So in the memo is all of the very dry information that you have to go through. So I'm here in case you do have any particular questions. The one thing I did not include in my memo, I thought I would just make sure everyone knows, this would be our sixth license under this umbrella, in case there was any questions out there. Oh.
Yeah, you weren't catching it with your mouth.
I'll start it over again out better.
All right. So this will be our sixth application for a license under what is called the Development District or DDA license due to Public Act 501 of 2006. And again, the location will be 110 East Broadway, Suite Number One. In case there are any questions, I'm here, and so are the applicants for any specific questions you may have.
Does the commission have any questions? Can you explain what the Development District license is?
I'll, I'll do a quick overview of that, how it is different from, if you will, a more traditional license. In a traditional setting, a license could be sold separate from a business. In this particular case, it is tied to a very specific location. And if a company went out of business, for example, it cannot be sold as an asset. It would be surrendered back to the state. It can be sold with a business, but it must be tied to the location and very specifically to the redevelopment of that property.
Okay. And what is the license for?
The type of alcohol, is everything? Well, in this case, there's not, there are no longer separate wine or beer or spirits. It's now the state has one license for everything.
Okay. So the Development District license is for, like, serving alcohol?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we, everyone knew what that is. It's very similar to what Pleasant City.
It is exactly. The six that we have, so Pleasant City Coffee, Dog Central, Jiv Bob, China Master, and Valhalla Axe Throwing. And so this would be the six.
All right.
I'm curious, and this is more just curiosity than anything. In the list, you didn't mention any of the other, like, bars or taverns or anything in the downtown area? What kind of is the distinction there? I guess kind of like between like the Brass Cafe and Midori versus like?
We could really do a whole work session on this because it gets very specific. Some of the establishments downtown are Class One restaurants. Some of them have a bar tavern license. Some of them have a brew pub license. Some of them have a large brewing manufacturing license. There's many licenses. It gets very detailed. When I started at the city, there were about six license types. There are now more than 40. So it can get very specific. For example, it didn't, the state didn't have a license for wine making, for example. Now there are six, depending on how much wine that you make and do you have a tasting room. Get into the weeds very fast. But downtown, and really this goes for the whole county, it really gets dependent upon when the license was obtained, who they bought it from, and what type of establishment do they have.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I'm shocked by this number, but I, I understood that with the, with the DDA license, you, you, I understood it to be that you had to invest, going forward, you had to invest money. Is that not true?
You can, you can either invest before applying for the license or ahead of time. So if you're applying ahead of time, the state says you have to, you have to spend the money before obtaining the license. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I would say $7.3 million far exceeds $200,000.
Oh, you're talking about the district? The whole district?
Oh, is that the whole district? Well, I don't know. It's.
They make really great coffee there already.
Did I put a comma? Wait, what?
I don't know. The, what, what it says.
Are you looking at the public, private? Like, were you just adding them together?
Oh, maybe I'm doing the wrong thing. I'm sorry. But it's, but that, that is true, though. There has to be an investment for the license, right?
The applicant itself. So the legislation also requires within the district to have a minimum threshold of investment overall.
Gotcha, okay.
So that number is not calculated by the applicant. That's the overall district of downtown. How much has been spent in private rehabilitation projects over the last five years or public? You know, parking lots, things along those lines.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Not seeing none, I'm going to open this public hearing to anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak, or if you're on Zoom. If you wish to come forward and speak on this, you may step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. You'll be brought into the meeting. You'll be given five minutes after you've stated your name and address. Are there, is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
No reason.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Are there any emails?
There are none.
Okay. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we are going to, I'm going to let the commission decide. Do, is there anything else you want clarification on before we move? Yes.
I actually do have a question about protocols for handling problematic clients. I don't know if there's a protocol for, you know, the Pounder Coffee, if they have one in place.
So Michigan Liquor Control Commission requires training on this very topic. Sometimes it's referred to tips training. Sometimes it's called taps train? Tams, thank you. I had, I was a little off there. But yes, liquor control requires that the applicants go through training.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm okay then.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other clarifications needed? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Do we need to read the whole resolution? Narratively?
I think you have to have stated motion to approve or disapprove.
Gotcha.
Of direct staff.
Gotcha. I am moved to approve the attached resolution and direct staff to conduct all necessary steps for Development District DDA license as stated in MCLA 436.1521A1BI.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. And we will move on to new business. In new business, we're going to consider whether a public hearing to adjust the 2024 millage rate should be held. Manager dissent.
So city commission approved the 16.25 millage rate for fiscal year 2024 when the budget was adopted in quarter four of last year. City commission reserves the right to adjust the millage right if, to adjust the millage rate if necessary. Staff is recommending that the millage rate remain unchanged. This is the same millage rate that the city has had since 2014. If the city commission is in agreement, then no further action is required. If there's an interest in changing the millage rate at all, a public meet, a public hearing would have to be scheduled in advance of that consideration.
And remind me, what is the millage rate right now?
16.
16.25.
How long have we had it at that millage rate?
That millage rate has been in place since 2014.
Okay. Before time. Is there any discussion among the commissioner?
I was just curious to ask staff, like, we're going over the capital improvement plan right now. We see, and I mean, like, we all see rising costs and everything, kind of just the thoughts and everything behind just not needing to raise the millage rate at this time. Just kind of any general sentiments or anything?
Yes, staff's very confident that we're able to operate our 2024 budget without an increase in the millage rate. Obviously, you do see some costs go up. And I know I've talked about that with the city commission in depth during our budget discussions. A lot of what staff has done is just handling inflation on our end, just being able to make those adjustments as needed. We've had a hard time in some instances, especially in the streets department or with our streets funding, being able to keep up with some of those bigger projects. That has required us to push some of the capital improvements further back. But I don't think it would make sense to do anything with the millage rate to address that. I think we'll continue to look at the long-term implications of this. And I know preliminarily in my discussions with Director Jason Moore, he feels very confident that even though we've had to push a number of different streets projects back, we'll still be able to keep up with these streets assets that we have and still be able to maintain them to the high degree of standard that we've been accustomed to over these years. So overall, staff feels very strong that we can continue to operate given the millage rate that we have. I'd also invite Finance Director Chris Salaty, if you wanted to speak on that as well, too.
I'll keep this pretty brief, just to kind of dovetail off of what manager dissent said. So far, what we're tracking year-to-date is more or less right on par with where we thought we would be with the 16.25. I really don't have a recommendation that we increase or reduce it. I think that, you know, we've had this millage rate for a long time, and I, I think we're at a pretty good even keel with our finances with that millage rate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapman.
Do you foresee a time where that goes down?
Possibly. We would have to have some sort of programmatic changing, like, we would have to not do something else in order for that to go down. Because a lot of really, our main funding source beyond it is grants, and that tends to be more one-time, you know, one-time dollars, which I, I would recommend not starting to adjust the millage up and down based on your, on your grant funding.
Sure.
Commissioner Eke?
I appreciate your comment right now about, you know, the grants, you know, acting as supplemental sources of income, of funding. My, 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 my position at the moment is because, you know, we are experiencing a lot of economic pressures, you know, in all directions, you know? So thinking about increasing the millage rate at this moment would seem to me a bit, you know, traumatizing for some people. You know, maybe not for everybody, but certainly for a lot of people, given, you know, what we are experiencing nationally and actually globally. So I am open to maintaining it as it is right now. If, you know, it's, as manager dissent says, there isn't an urgent need to increase the millage rate right now. And you have acknowledged that grants have been helping. So hopefully, we'll continue to pursue those grants, but maintain this rate as it is.
Commissioner Bush?
I just want to dovetail off that briefly. First of all, gratitude that we are in this position. This is huge. I feel like we should be making national news right now because one household or municipality isn't having trouble. And here, and so I feel a lot of gratitude.
Quite frankly, our departments do a very good job of watching costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we should pass that wind on to residents and just keep for some stability.
So do we have a consensus that we'll leave the millage as is? Yes.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to move on to consider the approval of BioSalads hauling and land application. Manager dissent.
Steph is recommending a negotiated contract extension with NutriGrow Environmental Solutions for two years for BioSalads hauling. Director of Public Works, Jason Moore, is here to discuss the benefits of the contract and answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, so this is a contractor that we've worked with since 2014. Now, of course, the contract's been bid regularly since then. But last year, we negotiated a, a price increase and a contract extension for one year. And really, we probably should have asked for the full three years back then because it is a good price. And I think we'll probably end up paying more if we were to go out to a sealed bid again. So that's kind of the rundown, I guess, unless there's any other questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Eke?
I know that we have talked about this somewhere in, sometime in the past. We've talked about the lime, you know, hauling. So again, I'm curious. What did you say they do with the lime, the, you know?
This is actually for the Water Resource Recovery Facility. So it's a BioSalads. The lime is at the water plant. But really, both things end up being put on farm fields as a, as a soil supplement.
So this wouldn't be part, the lime wouldn't be part of this?
No, they're separate contracts. I did put that in there, in the memo, just as a comparison. That contract had gone up like 30%. And so, yeah, I'm saying, look.
Okay, okay.
You know, this is a pretty good price.
Cool, thanks.
Yep.
Commissioner Chapman?
And this is already budgeted for?
Yeah.
Same thing I told Doug Lobster. If we're fiscally responsible and we've budgeted for this, I don't think there should be any opposition for it.
Are there any other questions or clarifications needed? All right, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve a contract extension with NutriGrow Environmental Solutions incorporated until July 11th, 2026 for BioSol, for BioSalads hauling and land application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to the discussion of for the food truck ordinance, possible amendments to it. Manager DeSens.
The city commissions received some information on the city's food truck ordinance and a request to amend it. I know that request had gone out to everyone on the city commission here. Steph's looking for direction on this item. If the city commission is interested in amending the ordinance, then Steph would recommend a work session to be set to discuss that in the future.
I'd be interested in the work session, just so we could, like, go over the weeds of it and everything. I haven't had a whole lot of time to, like, really delve into the issue myself, but it seemed, like, on the surface, what was presented to us seemed fairly reasonable. So even if it's just, like, kind of us getting a better feel for the issue, I would appreciate a work session.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. You know, this is detailed. I'd like to discuss it.
Okay.
And a work session will give us that opportunity to do that.
Anyone else?
The trucks help make Mount Pleasant fun.
Yep. All right, so it sounds like the direction from the commission is to move and put this in a work session.
Understood.
All right, now we're going to move on to consider a resolution to amend the PACE district. Manager DeSens.
Today, we're joined by a representative from Lean and Green Michigan to provide an update on the PACE program. The city commission is asked to consider amendment to the program, which would allow engagement in the program without the necessity of the project to yield the net savings on the utility costs. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Williams from Lean and Green Michigan to discuss the proposed changes.
Thank you very much, and good evening. My name is Todd Williams, I'm President General Counsel, Lean and Green Michigan. What brings us before you is actually a change in the PACE statute by the state of Michigan, which was adopted in July, became effective in the middle of February, February 13th. What it necessitates, however, is, you know, the program report that you guys adopted, the PACE program that you adopted, is now a little bit out of step with the PACE statute. And so the proposed amendment would update your program to bring it back in line with the PACE statute and the changes that it contained. There are a couple, I want to say three large areas in which the statute was amended. First is, you know, pertains to the SIR, Savings to Investment Ratio requirement. Previously, Michigan had the most stringent one in the country. It was actually a bit of a roadblock for property owners and a little bit more protection than property owners actually wanted. And over the years, we've had request after request to try and limit that down. Previously, it was for the full term of the loan. So a PACE loan could go 20 to 25 years. A contractor would have to guarantee the savings outstripped the investment being made by the property owner by at least a penny, greater than one, on an annual basis for 25 years. And anybody talking to a contractor, getting them to guarantee their work for 25 years, it's very tough. We've saw project after project where frankly, it's tough on a contractor when you're guaranteeing work to a hotel, trying to envision what their occupancy rate's going to be 25 years from now. And so, you know, it became a bit burdensome. The new statute for renovations or retrofits to existing buildings, the protection is still available. It's up to the property owner to choose whether or not they want the SIR, the savings guarantee, or if they want to waive it. And so that's a fairly substantial change. You, of course, will still have the ability, when a project comes forward for approval, to determine if you think it's a good idea or not as well, and be able to weigh in at that point. Second major change, the statute now codifies how we treat new construction projects. You know, forever we have made new construction projects, the contractor determine their guarantee and show their work that they're going above code. Because in order to build, you know, PACE is meant to inspire energy savings, meant to inspire energy efficiencies, meant to inspire renewable energies, and building a code building is wonderful, but it's the absolute worst building you can build. It's what you have to, what you're actually required to build. So, you know, PACE isn't inspiring you to do anything extra, if we're just making you build what you have to. You know, now in the statute, it's no longer in the savings requirement, but if you want to finance anything with PACE, you have to actually build it above code. Our energy code is pretty strict, so I'm kind of looking forward to that challenge for new property owners, new construction property owners, as we continue to move forward. The final major change is the introduction of environmental hazard PACE projects. This extends PACE to be able to use it for property owners to finance projects which will mitigate PFAS, heavy metal, and lead from potable water systems, improve the resiliencies of the property against weather and against flooding. And there's one fourth bullet point for the life of me, it's slipping my head right now. But the concept is, you know, it's expanding what PACE can be used to finance. Nothing with the resolution today proves any particular project, it just actually updates your program to incorporate these changes and bring your program report back in line with the actual PACE statute.
Okay. Are there any questions?
This may be more for city staff, so forgive me, but I remember when we first adopted this, we were going to make some effort to connect with unit township and, you know, the county in general about possibly adding on to the district. Has there been any discussion of that, or?
I know we discussed the PACE district when we had first adopted it. I don't know that we got any further feedback from anywhere else as to their interest in expanding it.
Okay.
And I can say that we previously reached out to the county, and, you know, we've not aggressively followed up at this point, where my team is wonderful, I love them, but we've got 58 jurisdictions and every one of the reports is getting updated this quarter or last quarter, and so we've been a little bogged down. Actually, two of my team members are talking with City of Muskegon tomorrow night about becoming our 59th. So we're still working on it, but we happy to circle back with other local communities and with the county. Happy to take any introductions.
My question would be, so the section, the amendments include the following for retrofits or rehab projects, the option for the property owner to waive the energy savings guarantee and for new construction. Kind of, what have, like, opt-in versus opt-out? Like, if they're making that active decision, is there anything that accompanies that? Like, if they actively opt in to the savings guarantee, what happens versus if they actively opt out, what happens?
So I will tell you, I personally fought against completely stripping the SIR out of the Michigan statute, which has been the trend by some of the PACE lenders, what they've advocated for in state by state, just getting rid of any SIR requirements. My fear was that property owners would have a hard time opting in. And so what we've, what we managed to create was basically an opt-out. They must positively opt out and provide to us a waiver that they understood the savings guarantee and what they're foregoing and getting. And so we included, within the new PACE program report, within the model special assessment agreement, is a copy of that waiver, I believe it's Appendix J or Appendix I. So you can see the waiver that they would need to sign. I can tell you, the first couple of projects this year that have included that, we've actively required the property owner to sit down and have a discussion with us, as the program administrator for that jurisdiction, to make sure they understood what they were signing and what they were potentially giving up.
Commissioner Chapman.
Is that 25 years, is that when they expect you to start saving money? I mean, is that, why take it out or, or instead of, instead of being able to opt in for 25 years, why not make it just shorter?
Well, so the term of it doesn't have anything to do with the guarantee necessarily. You know, previously, you know, whatever your term of loan was, if it was five years or if it was 10 years or 25 years, the guarantee had to be there on an annual basis for that full term.
Oh, whatever the term was.
Whatever the term was.
Oh, gotcha.
So the PACE term length, why, you know, why a property owner may want to look at, you know, 10 years versus 20 years?
Yeah.
It really just comes down to the cost they're paying per year.
Sure.
The amortization and whether or not it's going to be a good business deal for them to cash flow. Frankly, sometimes it works better with a shorter term than it does with a longer term, and that's really a good business decision for the property owner to be able to make.
Sure.
And this gives them a little bit better flexibility in being able to make that.
Yeah. Is there an estimated cost of what having to build above code is? Like, 10% more, 20% more?
No.
That seems kind of restrictive, too.
It is a little restrictive, but I can tell you, new construction is, you know, the dominant portion of the projects that have closed in the last couple of years. It's not been as restrictive as you might think. Most of the property owners coming in, building with a long-term mentality, particularly in senior living and hospitality, are looking to build as efficient as they possibly can, and they're already coming in above code. You know, it's different areas of different types of equipment, some of it's easier to get above code than others, so.
Commissioner Aki.
Okay. So thank you for this presentation and for providing us with some clarity. I'm actually particularly interested in the environmental hazard projects, you know, the inclusion of those. I, you know, lead, I understand, because we've been talking about lead for God knows how long, but PFAS is new, and that's the one that I'm looking at, I'm curious about. So what guidelines are they using? I mean, in everything that I've read has suggested that they aren't really specified, you know, established current state or federal guidelines, so now somebody is trying to build, what are they going to do? What are they using?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Oh dear.
So I will, I'll freely admit to that. I can tell you, I've been talking with program administrators in three other states where they've been looking at it. I forget the acronym right now, the National Insurance Organization has been trying to pull together, you know, some sort of resiliency guide for how, you know, currently, if you're looking at traditional PACE project, you'll see that we refer to an ash rate level two energy audit, which is a recognized methodology, industry standard, energy audit of a building. And we don't have that quite on the resiliency, in particular in some fields like remediation of PFAS, which is still relatively new technology. So my, my team has been reading an awful lot about PFAS, trying to get up to speed on it. We've yet to have a project come in, but I can tell you, the first one that hits our door, it's going to take them probably a little longer than they would like, because we're going to have a bit of an education curve on that. They're going to have to prove to us the technology is actually remediating the PFAS. We're going to be very interested in seeing what sort of ongoing monitoring and verification of that will be there. I'm happy that we don't quite have all the answers. I'll freely admit that I don't on this one yet, it's just a little bit too new.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve a resolution to amend our Property Assesses Clean Energy Program, PACE District.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we also set the public hearing?
The public hearing is optional.
Oh. I'll withdraw then.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now we move on to consider an appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm going to hand this over to Commissioner Chapman.
Yeah, we, we've had a couple times where, I guess, the Parks and Rec haven't had a quorum, and so this has been a long time coming. There is a great applicant, Jonathan Croft. He is, he lives in Mount Pleasant. He rents a house and owns a house in Mount Pleasant. He's, he was a camp director for a long time. He's, and he was, he sat on the board review in Kalamazoo County. He led internships at different camps for 10 years and just seemed like a great candidate for it, and so the recommendation is to appoint John, Jonathan Croft, to Parks and Rec Board.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
And he'll show up to a meeting.
We hope so.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move that we accept the recommendation of Commissioner Chapman and nominate Mr. Croft to the Parks and Rec.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. And Mr. Croft is now on the Parks and Rec. Okay, we're going to move to announcements on city-related issues and new business. This is where the commission gets, the commission and the staff gets to bring forward information that they may have and announce it to the public. Commissioner Bush.
There will be a free tire recycling day at the county fairgrounds this Saturday. I believe the start time is eight o'clock. I apologize, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but it is this Saturday, the 18th, at the county fairgrounds.
Anyone else? Commissioner Chapman.
I know the Care Store is in the Strickler Nonprofits Center. They have a fundraiser this Friday. It sounds like it's going to be a pretty funny, but I don't quite understand it, but it's, it's something similar to, let's make a deal and prices right, but it sounds like it's going to be fun, so if you're interested in that, it's Friday, six o'clock.
And where is that going to be?
To Comfort Inn. You can buy tickets. I think they're selling tickets online on their website.
Okay.
Which is thecarestore.org.
Oh. Any other announcements? All right, we have a, somebody else wanting to speak? No? Okay, yeah?
Is there something with ICRH this week? Or is that next week?
It's Thursday.
This Thursday is the kickoff to the Capitol campaign.
Yes, they, well, they said they wanted to invite the commission to that, to tour the building, too, whatever time that is in day.
Yes.
Thursday, when?
Thursday.
At what time?
Ooh, is it four to six?
Oh, it's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Okay.
I can, I can circle back to the city commission on that. I feel bad saying I don't know what the time is.
No, no, that's okay. I just know that they had.
I think it's four to six.
They had mentioned, I had talked to DNC.
Is that the Rob Commission?
No, 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 the Isabella.
ICTC.
No, 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 no. Isabella County Restoration House.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said.
No, 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 I said, I said ICRH, I just assumed everybody knew what that meant, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought I heard.
And that's down at their new, their new building.
Yeah, 555.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
So I think it said they were gonna.
It's by the post office, right?
Yes.
It's not, well, it's on the same street.
Yeah, well, not next door, but close enough.
Yeah. Okay. Any other? Okay, we're going to close announcements on city-related issues and new business, and at this time, we're going to open up the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to make a comment on something that was spoken today here or something else you'd like to bring to the commission, you may step to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You will be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay.
Hello, my name is Joseph Carrion. I live at 109 North Arnold Street, and I have just randomly become the spokesman for the township on AI applications. And so I've done a lot of research on placer.ai these past couple of weeks, and I just want to share this knowledge to you guys as well. I believe the last time I spoke on this, I agreed with Commissioner Chapman on a lot of things, but there was one thing I didn't agree with him on, but I couldn't speak with 100% certainty because I didn't have enough knowledge on AI, and that is tracking. So when we're talking about tracking, a lot of people tend to think of like a Track My Phone app, or even like tracking your favorite football team or favorite player, placer.ai, and any application that uses these types of aggregate data sets, they can't track in any way close to that. The best way to explain it to stay in the realm of football is, say you want to track your favorite football team, let's say we're going with the Lions, right? Essentially, you wouldn't be able to just track the team's stats, you would have to track the stadium, and the stadium will give you the stats of every football team that's ever played at that stadium. You can see how it's impossible to track any given specific team or player, and that's how all of these applications work. So there's, now I can say with 100% certainty, there's no such tracking going on with these. So I really hope that helps with not just you guys, but with the people of Mount Pleasant for bringing stuff like this into the town. The next thing I want to step into, I guess, is the solutions itself. One of the big things I was concerned about, I spoke last time, was about crime. This solution claimed that it could use, or be a big, give accurate data upon with crime rates. It turns out, it's just using public FBI crime records, it's not using the aggregate data sets at all. So again, this is a completely safe application. There's nothing to this that's harmful in any way. To me personally, my concern still, again, comes to the use of it. I don't necessarily know how this city is going to use it to its fullest, to my understanding, I'm not sure. So placer.ai specifically, and this is where I have questions, has nine solutions. I do know you guys are doing an annual subscription with one account. Does that account give you access to all nine solutions or just the civic solution? Do you know?
I don't want to necessarily get into a back and forth here this evening, but Joe, I wonder if maybe I can get some contact information from you?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd love to have you even maybe come in and take a look and just let me know what you think.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and then, so, and the last part of it, again, is just down to the interns. Again, I'm 100% for this program in the sense that it is built upon an internship program, and I'll forever keep stating that, but I'm just still, I still haven't heard a plan, which we can get together again later. I'd love to hear the plan fully, because as of right now, I feel like, you know, I've been to three internships myself when I went through college, and two of the three were absolutely useless to me, and my only concern would be is that this would be useless to maybe some college students, and I would hate for that program to be that. But other than that, that's about it, I hope. And if you guys have any more questions, I said I'm going to be helping the township with this as well, once they announce it to their townies. And, but if you guys, again, want more information, because I know the citizens are concerned about AI, I understand completely, yeah, just ask away and I'll, I'll be here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No reason.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Chris Oates, I live at 940 South Crawford Road in Mount Pleasant. If you guys are aware of 1400 West Pickard, the property owned by the city of Mount Pleasant, it's between Crawford and Bamber, Pickard and River. Okay, few problems we have with this. You guys bought it a long time ago, 2011-ish, 10, 12, something like that. So, but you've been doing, you've removed buildings, and the last current figure I had that I afforded the information was, the last in the whole report was $5.6 million of that land. And currently, you guys are having people to mow on the Pickard side, which is costing anywhere between $7,000 and $8,000 per year on land that we cannot use. It's no trespassing on public land. I know how it's zoned, it's commercial zoning, and you also have a farmer on that land using about one-third of it. And in that agreement, it is a monthly agreement, section 5.5, tenants shall maintain the soil nutrients within ranges commonly accepted under the good and farming practices and standards. Soil testing shall be done each year, and if liming is required, the tenant shall do so at own expense. A copy of the soil test results and recommendations shall be sent to the landlord, that's the city of Mount Pleasant. Should this agreement be terminated before effective date, the tenant is not in default with payments, otherwise breaches of land agreements, the tenant shall be reimbursed, blah, blah, blah. Section 5.7, the tenant shall maintain. be reimbursed, blah, blah, blah. Section 5.7, the tenant shall maintain annual records of chemicals and herbicides used on the leased crop ground, which is the city of Mount Pleasant, that's our land. No such record has ever been filed, soil results, chemical herbicides, nothing. There is watershed there, there's, there's wetlands there, nobody knows. I live right by there. I see trucks dumping all sorts of things, filling tanks, washing tanks, I don't know if they're washing tanks, but I have seen plenty of stuff. Nothing's done. And I, if you look at the data, you get about, let me see here, I got it right here. The farmer, you guys get about $15,738 a year from, from leasing, one-third of that ground, which is about over 110, 112 acres, give or take. Two fields, two additional proposed fields were added to that back in the day. So basically, it's unchecked. The guy who owns it hasn't filed one, one chemical, herbicide, soil test, nothing. And this is since this is being owned, and then plus the $9,000 grass cutting, it would take 350 years to make it, to pay off what the city owns in that property of farming and just destroying the soil. Also, the cutting of the grass, you want to factor that in, it'll take 750 years to pay off that land. And since 2018, when the big drain of moving all the buildings out and putting all the new grass and removing the roads and sidewalks and power lines and all that stuff, you guys mow it. Doesn't need to be mowed. Stop the farming, stop it, and, you know, let it get back to a thing. And you guys have been in, now litigation, the city manager has said that since 2023 maybe-ish, that they've been in litigation because something, when you guys bought this back over 10 years ago, you guys didn't really know about what it could be used for. Now there's something that the state has stipulated that allows you guys can't use that land. That land should be either the public's, which, and which I was told that it's not public land, that public can't go on it, it's for like commercial use, which would be selling it for businesses or giving it, or selling it to, or with the people that do all the buildings.
Contractors?
Contractors, to put, to put, you know, living places in there. You know how much money you could be brought into the city of Mount Pleasant by developing that land? You have a half a square mile, minus what you sold back to the Native American tribe. But you guys have a whole solid half-square mile of businesses and properties that could be put in, and houses. I would suggest you guys get on that, figure that out, and then move to make some money and make some changes, add some new housing, maybe, maybe housing for lower-income people, not like, not apartments, like housing people can afford, 100, $250,000 houses, because we need, that's where the people that are making all, doing all the hard work, is us poor people. I'm a disabled veteran, but those, we, we need cheaper housing, and you need to get with some contractors and try to maybe figure out some, you know, nice, cheaper housing for families that can't afford to live in here, and then start making some money back on your taxes and selling that land.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time?
Goodness, mine isn't nearly as important as that, but I read in the newspaper.
Can you state your name and address?
Margaret Notstein, 1361 South Crawford Street, Mount Pleasant. I read in the newspaper that you may be changing your waste and garbage pickup, and I don't know if you're still working on it or thinking about it or what you're doing, but I wanted to speak on that subject. My husband and I, we barely put out one can in a month. And if you're going to go to a monthly charge for this, I don't know what the amount is. I might have read it in the paper, but I don't want to have to pay that monthly charge. What was good about the, the way we do it now is if you put something out, you pay for it. Every can you put out, you pay for it. And if I'm going to be sending one can out in a month, I'm paying for everybody else's pickup, and I don't, I don't think I should have to do that. And just before I read this in the newspaper, I purchased a whole bunch of packages, because sometimes it goes up, and so if I buy it now, I've been, I'm in the present rate and not the new rate. And so I want to know, are you going to be buying back the tags that I just purchased, or, or just let me sit on those here, or try to find people who will buy them from me? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Is there any emails? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, so we will be back at 8:06.
All the time, and then I just, I got to.
Okay, you guys, we're back in session.
But I've made my money. Go back.
All right, we're moving into our work session. Our first topic is the discussion on the 2025-2030 capital improvement plan.
Good evening, commissioners. The last time we met, I gave you a more in-depth presentation. And so what I want to do is just give you guys an opportunity, if there's any questions. As a brief reminder, we have a public hearing set for the second meeting in May, and then the charter requires that we adopt the capital improvement plan by the first meeting in June, which is June 10th this year.
Okay, are there any questions, clarifications? Yes.
Did we get feedback? So one of the projects that had been moved from the 20, or had been pushed back and has kind of been tabled, was the new farmers market structure.
Correct.
Did we get feedback on like why we didn't get approved for that?
Yeah. Mr. Riscorner's left. Yes.
Yeah, for the grant.
Please do my own little work for a moment there. The short version is, originally, they were expecting about 100 applications. They had more than 1,000. They were expecting roughly $1 million in requests. They had over a billion, that's with a capital B. And quite frankly, there were more pressing needs, and unfortunately, we did not, we did not, we did not make the cut, if you will.
Okay.
Okay. We'll put forward more pressing need next time.
Are there any other questions, clarifications needed?
Could I get a reminder on the interest rate for the drinking water state revolving fund?
1.875.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so you would like any feedback, anything at this point emailed?
Correct. Through manager consensus, if there's any, anything else that comes up between now and our next steps.
Okay, so our next public hearing will be at the next meeting for this. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now we're going to move on to the discussion of Tifa.
I know you're super excited for this.
We're always excited about Tifa.
I know.
We like you.
We just like you to wear many hats.
Yes.
Well, I'd love to tell you I can make this exciting, but just not really sure. I'll try, I'll do my best. So tonight, our work session, we're going to be reviewing our three tax increment finance districts.
Can you make that screen bigger?
Oh. Perhaps.
Screen, oh, maybe the text. Go to the three dots.
I saw that when I came in.
Not it. This place, settings.
Try showing your task.
I can do this.
Yeah.
My words are heavy. Geez, I'm going to have to, okay, so I'm going to, so can everyone see that pretty good, though? You should also have the slides in your packet as well. All right, so we're going to present options, and we're going to ask you, the city commission, for consensus in our next steps. First, we're going to start with. First, we're going to start with a brief overview of what a TIF district is, how and how they work. Second, we'll cover a bit of history on each of the districts and options for those. And finally, we're going to discuss consensus on the options so staff can proceed accordingly. Tax increment finance, otherwise known as TIF, sometimes known as TIFA, is a procedure that allows municipalities to capture the additional or incremental taxes from property as it increases in value over time from a geographically defined district. These tax dollars have historically included library and school funds as well. However, due to changes in legislation, only city and county funds are currently captured. The assessed value of properties located in the district at the time it was created establishes the baseline value. Property owners continue to pay taxes as usual, but a portion of the money is redirected to pay for the development activities that have a public benefit. Any incremental increase in property values above this baseline are captured to be reinvested within the district. And I want to be really clear that the funds that are captured in the district can only be spent within the district. The city has three TIFA capture districts. The Central Business District, or CBD TIFA, which is located downtown. The Industrial Park North, as we call it, IPN, located at the northern edge of the city. And Mission Picker Downtown Development Authority, or the DDA, that lies from the eastern edge of the city on Pickered, ending just to the west of Mission Street, moving south along Mission all the way to the southern border of the city. Each TIF district must have a development plan describing what projects and goals that the TIFA wishes to pursue in the coming years, such as paying for infrastructure costs, parking lots, alleyways, lighting, incentives and programs, marketing and more. Each plan has an expiration date, and if that extension is warranted, a lengthy adoption process requiring public hearings and adoption of, by the city commission. Each of our TIF district plans have an expiration date approaching. So tonight's work session is to ask you for direction on those extension of the plans. We'll go through each district and provide details on each with a staff recommendation, or what we think, and then recap at the end. First, let's review the Central Business District, created in 1984, amended five times for development plan modifications, and has a zero capture rate since 2019. Primary focus is streetscape improvements and parking lot reconstruction, which outpaced the cost, prompting the change in 2019 to have the capture rate changed to 0%, providing the city commission to decide the priority of CIP projects across the whole city. In 2018, the city commission made a crucial decision regarding the CBD TIFA and changed that capture rate to zero, as the TIFA was not generating enough revenue, even when it was an 88% capture rate. It could not cover the maintenance needs of the 13 parking lots and other public infrastructure requirements, let alone address any other priorities outlined in the TIFA development plan. The city commission now reviews the totality of the city's infrastructure need. And by doing so, you're able to allocate resources more effectively across all city priorities. Another consideration is the flexibility of funds. Unlike the general fund, TIF funds are more restricted in their usage. This lack of flexibility can pose challenges when trying to address evolving community needs or unexpected expenses. However, even with a zero capture rate, there are still reporting requires mandated by the state of Michigan. Lastly, extending the TIF plan and increasing the TIF rate would mean capturing funds from the Isabella County, which staff plans could strain our working relationship with the county by imposing additional financial burdens that would be counterproductive and potentially damaging. Options for CBD TIFA is, one, dissolve it. Or two, extend the plan for five years with a capture rate to be determined by the commission. Turning our attention to Industrial Park North, we observe a similar zero capture rate since, well, I would say 2018, but actually, when we looked back, it was the early 2000s. Although significantly different in nature, its use from the CBD TIF district, Industrial Park North is fully built out with infrastructure expected to last another 30 to 40 years without additional investment. Options similar to CBD TIFA, dissolve or extend the plan for five years with a capture rate to be determined. Mission Picker DDA, which operates as a TIF district, has a 28% capture rate since the early 1990s. This area is scheduled for future reconstruction and continues to address pedestrian and traffic safety, along with access management, making the captured funds essential for achieving the desired outcomes. Again, you can choose to dissolve or extend the existing plan for five years with the current capture rate of 28%. Do you have any questions about that high-level overview of TIF districts?
I just have one that, right now, there's a committee that's working, and I know you're, Commissioner Chapman is our only representative on that committee to work on the DDA, the plans for it.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't think it would be good to dissolve it while we have plans for it.
Yeah. I'm curious what, what projects, especially right now when we're investing in downtown. I also agree it doesn't make sense to dissolve. But what kind of projects since 1984 have been done with that captured funds?
Oh, okay, so going back.
Like all the way 1984 to present day, every one of them.
All the way, every point, really. I'm going to date myself if I start telling you all of them.
I'm just curious, like what kind of things this?
The largest one in the 80s was the streetscape. So everything from the edge of the building to edge of the building. Sidewalk, curb and gutter, road reconstruction, the light poles, the brickwork, all of that. Parking lot reconstructions, and then simple mill overlay projects of not only parking lots, but alleyways as well. Let's see if I'm, am I forgetting anything? Those are the, those are the measurements. I mean, the streetscape was a huge debt that was paid down over, I believe it was 17 years altogether. So when I came on board, the parking lots, for example, were not listed in the CIP. It took five years of saving just to get to the point where we could drop it into the CIP. That's the way we did things at that time, because we had just ended paying down the debt for the street, the streetscape.
Commissioner Akay?
So I, I want to make sure that I, I heard you correctly. With the current capture percentages, you're not suggesting that there isn't anything being received?
Well, for the TIF, for Industrial Park North and for downtown, the TIF.
Nothing.
Correct, those are at a zero capture rate.
So it's the mission one that actually produces something?
Correct, and that goes into reserve, a reserve fund. And again, the plan is very specific as to what it can be used for. So when I mentioned access management and those improvements that we're looking ahead, be it five or 10 years from now, those are included in the plan and they can be used on those things.
Okay, I'm going to ask you critical, serious, you know, critical questions.
Okay.
So since you are the one, you understand this particular structure, this mechanism that we're talking about right now. And one, you know, we've got only two options, which is either dissolve it or extend it for five years. So I would like you to at least say to me, this is the advantage of dissolving either or any of them. And this is the disadvantage, you know, of dissolve, of not dissolving, you know? So what is your thinking? Because you understand this far more than I understand, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm looking at the city manager, are you okay with me? Just jumping in here, or would you want to join me in this conversation?
I'll follow your lead.
Okay, so let's start with what I believe is, is the easiest of all the three districts. Let's go with Industrial Park North.
Okay.
I'm going to say that it's fairly wrapped up with a bow. It is completely built out. The infrastructure is taken care of for the next 40 years.
Okay.
We're be, going to be doing a mill and overlay of the road itself. I think we can set that aside. There are no future plans, you can't, it's, it's landlocked, you can't extend it anyplace. We put in the retention pond, there really isn't anything to do. And we haven't had a capture rate in 20 or so years. I don't see the sense of the reporting requirements that are quite onerous, continuing to do those when we have a zero capture rate and there's nothing to do in that district.
Okay.
So that's, I'm going to say, let's start with the easy one.
Okay.
I don't want to say the hardest one. So the next, I would say, let's go to the Mission Picker DDA. I believe that it should be extended for five years. I, I don't see the sense at this particular time of changing that capture rate. The plan is quite detailed as far as what it can be used for. There's flexibility in it for all the future things that we hope to do on Mission Street. So that would be my general recommendation there. Again, you have the final say, I just want to remind you. Okay.
And if I could to, to support some of that as well too. As we go through the Mission Picker Corridor Improvement Plan that Commissioner Chapman is on the steering committee for, as we go through that, we know, and MDOT has already signaled, that anything that would be constructed above what is currently there would come at the expense of the city. And the captured dollars that are being saved by the Mission Picker DDA group could be utilized for those purposes, which is why you'd want to continue capturing there.
Okay, okay, correct.
If I could get a bit of insight on that, so built above what is already there. So does like changing the layout of lanes into, like include also building out above what's there? Or is that just kind of like shifting things around so they're paying for it?
What they would pay for is essentially the current five-lane structure that it is at this point. And that's what they would pay for. Now, if we were to do anything, right now, the group is talking about the potential for would boulevards make sense? Would roundabouts make sense? If you do boulevards, you've got truck loans, there's a number of other things. And there's other things that we've explored and talked about as well too. Do we try to make the pedestrian environment more friendly as well? There's just little drafts of benches, drafts with small benches, lights, you know?
But all of that would come back to us.
All of that would be paid locally, yes.
Okay, good. All right, I'm glad I asked my question.
Well, I think she had one more, I think.
We have one more district.
Yes, yes.
Which is the Central Business District. So I will tell you from my vantage point of being here close to 20 years now, that the costs have always ran far ahead of what the TIFA district captured. And it has worked very well over the last few, well, few years, six year, five years, I guess it is, with having the infrastructure of downtown put on the same level as everything else across the city. That has worked very, very well, because there are times that the Parks Department or the Water Department is going to come ahead, and then there may be times when downtown is to come ahead. But then we are able to talk about it very holistically in a grand, big picture for the all of the city. To go back and have a capture, again, I do want to point out that that would be taking funds away from the county. And I, I cannot in my, in my mind, come up with a, a plan that would utilize funds that could outweigh that and somehow fit into the CIP. It just, I, I just don't see it at this particular time. We are almost at the end of the infrastructure rebuilding a number of our parking lots. We have a couple more parking lots, four and five, I won't worry about the where. Nobody can remember that but me. However, then most of our very large ticket items for downtown will be taken care of. We'll be looking at repainting the, the light poles, for example, over the next few years. But then the CIP can then focus itself completely without that capture elsewhere in the city where those funds are needed. So that's a very long-winded way of me saying I would not extend the plan and not increase the capture, in a nutshell.
Commissioner Chapman?
I, I think, I mean, we talk about the projects we want to do on Mission and all these things. I, I think we can't overlook the fact that we're, once, I mean, once the town center is going to be done, there's plenty more projects that we could do if we wanted to have a thriving downtown. And I can't imagine that we would spend $2.3 million and not want to have a thriving downtown. So I think, especially, I mean, we have a master plan, we have all these things where we're, we're not looking at today. We're looking at the future, right? And so I, I have to believe, once this thing is dissolved, it's not coming back, right? Could it? Sure, but it's been.
It could. It would, it would be, I, I'm going to say not a difficult climb back, but there needs to be a reason. So if the funds that you're bringing in are outpacing your capital projects, what is it that you would want to see done? And why couldn't it be done out of general fund dollars? Or depending on what it is, economic initiative fund?
Well, I, I think, I think why, because it's very specific, right? So there's a, there's, just like the DDA, it's very important that the DDA has funds to make those decisions with that committee that we trust to make those decisions. Right now, when it's in the general fund, the general fund isn't necessarily looking at the central business district. The, that's what that TIF board does, is look at the business district and said, and, and instead of having this high-level oversight to say, hey, we have, we have all this downtown, because that's why we have the three districts, is because there's, there's a group of people that are looking at that specific area and say, how can we best serve this specific area with, with capturing? I mean, that's why they exist, right? And so that's why we have the DDA, because the DDA says, we're going to do what's best for the Mission and Picker corridor. We're not worried about downtown. And that's what they're there for. And so the same with the, the downtown is, is they're saying, we're going to focus our efforts and to make sure that the downtown is thriving. And unfortunately, with the general fund, the general fund is, is flexible, but it's not focused on the thing that I think we've decided, because we're spending a ton of money to focus on right now. And so when that, when those general fund dollars are, are, they're not allocated for that, they're, it's hard to be used for that. And so to have that TIF district to say, we're going to make sure, even if it's 10% to say, let's, because we got to build for the future, we're, we're, hopefully, with the investment that we're making, we're saying, we believe in the future of our downtown. So let's believe in it and say, let's save some money. That's how, like you said, we got the streetscape, because people were, they, they, they were forward-thinking and they said, we're going to save this money and then we could pay down the debt. I just don't think it's wise to, even, I don't know how the percentage works. If it has to be a certain percentage or if we make that percent. But I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's wise to say that we're not going to focus on that with that board to do that and just trust that the general fund dollars are going to go there.
So the TIF board until 2018 was solely focused on parking lots. It, it was hard to get people engaged to get excited about parking lots. Because again, the funding was, was tied very closely to what, you know, what's in the plan, what the need was. From that moment on, the Economic Initiatives Fund gave them money for some programs, facade improvement and the fire suppression. Those have been the only things that they have been meeting on, and it's been, I'm going to say, on average, quarterly at best. There are ways to engage people downtown that I don't think needs to run through an extra board, if you will. So in your, you had mentioned 10%. So a 10% capture rate, and I'm going to look to Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that's $25,000, roughly? $27,000, and about 10 of that would come from the county, is that correct? Okay, so what I'm saying is, in order to extend the plan, there is some level of, you're going to capture from the county. So then, no, I mean, that's, that is a heavy lift, given what's going on at the county. I, I'm, I'm just not going to dance too much around that. It, it is, it is something that we need to be aware of. So if there was going to be something for them to work on, that 10% capture is $27,000. I think that you can allocate $27,000 from somewhere else and streamline and not have to go through, quite frankly, the headaches of reporting for the CBD TIFA. I think you can get the same outcome, just do it a little differently. I have no doubt, we're creative people.
I mean, I understand it, but, but I also know it's guaranteed with the district.
However, but there have been a number of times when the TIF board wanted to do X.
Sure.
And it came before city commission, they said, no, we're going to go this other direction.
Sure.
And there was, and there was a lot of frustration because of that, there was.
How problematic is it if we were to decide specifically for the downtown area to keep it as a district, knowing that we're not going to start it captured, but you still would have to do the reporting?
Well, the reporting comes from, from the finance director. And it requires a couple of informational meetings. The state has certain requirements that we have to hold public hearings, or not public hearings, public meetings. Problematic, no, but then you have a board that has no funding and there's nothing. But then you have a board that has no funding, and there's nothing, like, they're sort of like, why am I here? If they don't have any funding to do anything, what, what is the purpose? Does that make sense?
Okay, so that leads to my next question, which is, right now, there's a DDA-Tifa board that we were looking to get someone from the north industrial district on it. And if that gets dissolved, then they wouldn't need to have any representation.
Correct. If, if you dissolve any of the boards, they, if you will, cease to exist. There's no more meetings.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
You wouldn't need another body for that.
Right. So that would be the same consideration then for downtown? Keep it, there's reporting, and they have no power?
In 2019, what, like, what was the, like, obviously, we know the decision to stop collecting funds was because it wasn't keeping pace with anything. That, that, that's for the downtown development, or, yeah, the downtown. It was dropped to zero capture. There was no use in collecting funds at that point. That, that seems to be the philosophy.
There's a little bit more having to do with some special events and things, but generally speaking, yes.
Gotcha. Why, oh, why, does, why was the decision made to keep the board versus, like, why dissolve, like, drop it to zero capture versus dissolving it at that time?
Well, you, you have to have a board, even if there's a zero capture.
Uh, no, 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 like, uh, so, yes, that's my question. So, um, we dropped the rate down to zero capture there.
Yes.
Um, and, but we decided to maintain the district. Why didn't we, like, why didn't we dissolve the district? Yeah, why didn't we get rid of the district?
Because at the time, the board was given, uh, funding from the Economic Initiatives Fund for the fire suppression and the facade improvement. So it was, we no longer have a capture, however.
There are funds dedicated to it.
Essentially wanted something to do, so they were given these funds to oversee for these programs.
Okay. Um, along with that, also, um, kind of, if we did dissolve it, I, what is the process for establishing one of these boards?
Down the road, if you want to restart it?
Yeah, so like, let's say we just do away with downtown, but 10 years from now, like, our predi, our, the people after us are like, hey, why didn't they keep it? We need that now.
And, and I'm gonna say, some of that is unknown, because you have to set a baseline. And so some of the financial parts, there, there's no way without a crystal ball to have any idea what that would look like. Um, but it takes multiple hearings. It's, um, you have to set a board, you have to create a plan, you have to design where the boundary's going to be. I mean, it's, it's labor-intensive, but to be clear, so is writing the extension for these. It's about the same.
Okay, yeah, that's where.
It, it, it is not, it's not a, a light lift. Because essentially, you're calling it an extension, but you're all, really, you're rewriting it.
Manager dissents.
I'm gonna slightly take another position on this. And it's, uh, just talking as to why the City Commission may consider moving forward with the Central Business District, TIF District. And it really, from a, from a business standpoint, it just comes down to dollars and cents. As the Finance Director had indicated, for a 10% capture, for any capture, really, rough numbers, about for every dollar that would be captured in the district, it would be 60% within the general fund, and 40% would be county funds.
Unless we get grants.
Um, so from a business standpoint, it's something worth considering. That otherwise, if you have infrastructure needs within the downtown, and you only have so much dollars within the city, obviously, being able to leverage, let's say, 40% of every dollar that you bring in from county dollars is very much beneficial. It's an external source of funding. A couple other considerations for the City Commission. The current Tifa district, which was established in 1984, because of its establishment date, it means that the city can continue to capture county dollars should it choose to do so. If we were to dissolve this district and then reestablish it later in the future, counties can then opt out at that point. And so the city would actually only capture its own money unless the other districts allowed the city to capture those dollars. So that's something to think of as well, too. With that timing in mind, one thing that the City Commission could consider, if the county's finances are something that weigh heavily on our minds, county is talking about doing some millage proposals later this year. They have renewals in August, and there's discussion of a potential millage to be added in November. A decision could wait until then, if need be. Twelve months would be a sufficient amount of time for staff to work on an extension of the plan, if we needed to do that. I wouldn't go any longer than that, though. So I would say that, uh, determination on this would have to happen here this year in 2024.
Okay. Commissioner Bush?
I definitely don't want to, like, make more work for anybody, especially us. But would it be possible to just operate the board as like, a, like, within this board as, like, if we were to not dissolve it, but just keep it at 0% for the time being, and not have a separate board, but just operate it as some sort of consent item until such time as it might be important? Like, it's just something, like, does it have to be a separate board?
Is the board, I'm gonna add, may I add, may I ask, follow up? Is the board establishment a requirement from the state, or is it voluntary?
It, it's required by state legislation.
Okay. And it doesn't matter where the board, board members come from. They just have to.
It, it does matter. They have to have a, I believe their phrasing is a principal interest within the district.
Okay.
So, but to be clear, no, it couldn't be City Commission. One of, one of the, one of the requirements is that you have to have a seat on the board for your taxing jurisdiction. So in this case, we have a representative from the county, for example.
Sure.
Okay, sure. Okay. So I, I also have a follow-up question. In terms of percentages, who determines the percentage for each entity, the city and the county? What determines that? 60% manager dissents says from the city, 40% from the county. How do we, how, how did we arrive at that, you know, those percentages?
So when it was 88%, that, quite frankly, predates me. I, I, I do not know the answer to why it, why it was 88%. That's what it was set at when I came on board. Um, 28%, um, there's been discussion in the past as, like, is it the right amount? And it seems to be, I'm gonna call it kind of the sweet spot for brings in enough money to do what the district needs, but isn't above and beyond in just setting money aside for a rainy day and some other project.
Because what I'm hearing from you is a concern for the county's fiscal, you know.
That's a part of it. It is.
Trauma right now. So that's what I'm hearing from you. And I do, I, 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 in, in, in a sense, I agree with, you know, the, the manager regarding, um, the need for, you know, to, for us to actually protect ourselves, you know? So the general fund is not going to, you know, it could just sort of fizzle down, you know, fizzle out, you know, depending on how we're spending it. And if we do have something to do, um, you know, to attend to in the central business area, would we have sufficient funds, you know, from our end to take care of that? Whereas, you know, the additional funding, fund from some other entity might help us buttress, you know, um, you know?
Oh, okay.
So.
So, yes and no. Because one of the things to remember, the funds that are captured within a district, whether that's Industrial Park North, whether it's downtown or whether it's Mission Pickered, can only be spent within the district.
I understand. That's, that's what I'm asking.
So the question of, like, could it someday, I'm gonna say, fill the gap for some other project, as long as it's within the district?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand. That's where I'm going with this. So given that, therefore, and the reason why I asked how we arrived at these percentages is, if your concern has to do with the county's percentage, is there possibility of reducing that percentage?
Manager dissents.
If I, to answer your question, the total capture rate would be set by the city in our plan. So if we said we wanted to capture 40% of all the taxes there, um, we, we could do that and establish that in the plan. The 60/40 ratio that I was referring to is the ratio of total tax dollars captured between city and county, and that's set, yeah, or, yeah, sorry, city and county. And that's set by the millage rates that each of those entities capture in whole.
Okay.
So that cannot be adjusted. We wouldn't be able to just say, oh, we're only collecting this much and this much.
Answered my question then. Yeah. Because I'm trying to figure out how to negotiate these pieces, right? Okay.
Commissioner Chapman?
How does the, um, what is the, uh, because there's boards for each of these. What do they think about dissolving their boards? Have, have they had any input?
Their board hasn't met since November. And we're bringing it to you first.
No, I mean, any of them. Do, are, are any of them, oh, okay.
So it sounds like, um, Industrial Park North has exhausted all of its need. That Tifa board has exhausted all of its need.
Its useful life.
Yes, its useful life. Um, it sounds like the Mission Pickered DDA still has need, because we are still looking at, um, renovating that area, trying to move forward, trying to make traffic flow in a better way. Um, but the Central Business District is kind of up in the, in the air, because if we could extend it, but if we do that, we don't know what will happen on the county and whether or not they, it would pose, um, more issues, more of a burden on them.
Correct. And then it would be, what would you want the plan, what would you want the funding to go towards that is?
That we haven't already done.
Exactly.
Okay.
And it, and is it worth it to keep the board just because there might be future plans?
Correct. We are now on an as-needed basis, because we are having meetings and, oh, there's a facade improvement application, thanks. And then looking around the room like, okay, and that's all. So there wasn't a lot of, of action for them to take.
Sure. And, and the funds, and again, just clarifying, um, projects that qualify are, like, infrastructure-related products. They're, like, tangentially related to infrastructure. Or could we, like, do, like, a festival or something? Not getting into specifics. I want to avoid specifics. I'm just trying to get, get, get a range of what the funds could be used for, I guess, kind of.
Tifa plans can be written, and quite frankly, our downtown CBD Tifa plan is very broad. It does include events and festivals, includes marketing, includes infrastructure. It included, um, coverage of staff for a while, matching funds for grants. There is, I have to say, it is everything but the kitchen sink in this particular Tifa plan.
Also, I know, I'm aware that, like, a lot of the downtown business, um, owners in the past have expressed interest. Chapman, you're on the, on the, on the seat now. I can't remember.
Oh, Principal Shopping District?
Yeah, so like, that one, a lot of people want their funds not to go to those things, or... Anyway, I'm getting way off topic. I'm dragging us in the wrong direction, so I apologize to my fellow commissioners. So, anyway.
Okay. So what do you want, um, what direction, how do you want us to present direction to you tonight?
Um, we can start with Industrial Park North, and you can give me a simple, uh, dissolve or?
Extend.
Extend. It can be as, as simple as that.
Okay. So if we're looking at Industrial Park North, what is the consensus on that? Um, with a raise of hands, to dissolve? Okay. So we've got that one.
Okay. Let's take the next, what I think is easiest, Mission Pickered.
Mission Pickered, yes.
Mission Pickered. Um, it sounds like there's a consensus to extend.
Yes.
Extend.
Is there, okay, then a raise of hands for extension? Okay. And now we have the one we're debating over. Um, but we can also, with that one, we can table it. We can put it aside until November.
You, you can think about it.
For up to a year.
Yeah. I was gonna go back here and just make sure that I have the, the plan expires December 31st of 2025.
Okay.
So by the, by the end of the year, yes. And then that is, if I'm, if I'm focusing on extending it, I'll know what my spring looks like.
Yeah.
Or if I'm dissolving, I know what to bring to you in January, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, yes.
Can I get one more question out there? For industrial, so downtown, um, due to when it was created originally, it's able to capture those county funds without consent from the county. That was part of the attractiveness of, like, that tool there, potentially.
If I could just, I'm, I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
Yeah. You need to clarify.
It wasn't like, like, the city didn't set out, say, oh, we're gonna capture these funds, and that was the target. The, the target really is, obviously, the downtown development. By the way, you have the ability to do this.
Okay.
And early on, I would say, in the, in the early adoption of a lot of these districts, there weren't a lot of them. They were not very widespread, and so it didn't create much of an issue. Where the issue, I think, and where the rub comes with some of the counties is that some of them have been going on since the inception of, of TIF districts, I think, back to the late seventies, 1978, give or take. Uh, and they've just continued, and there's no end in sight. And the idea of the TIF district is to increase property tax values in the district. So one in particular that has had an interesting history is Ann Arbor, downtown Ann Arbor. It's got a DDA there, they capture taxes there. And during tougher times, let's say, in the recessionary economics, uh, the city council in Ann Arbor was thinking, okay, it would be great if we could have some of this money that you guys have continued to capture for a long time. And the DDA just said, yeah, but we're gonna keep the party going here. And so that had been a bit of a rub there. And so it's been a bit of a rub for counties, because now we've, well, not we, but the state has expanded the tool to include industrial parks, downtown, any kind of business corridor. Now they're talking about allowing it for future residential development as well, too. And so if you're the county who's saying, well, wait a minute, at what point do I get made whole here is, is the issue.
So my, the clarification I was looking for, so is Industrial Park North of the same, like, classification in age range of, like, when it was established? Or, I can't remember.
Show us, yeah, 1984, yep. So ours is. Um, any, essentially, the, those districts between, before 1994, I believe, was the year